Okay, well, why don't we get started? And if Richard joins us, then all to the good. So I want to welcome everybody to the March 2nd meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. On our agenda is continue talking about the development by law. Look at the potential extension of the business district. And minutes, I believe. And is there anything else, Patrick? I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Let's see. I did get an opinion back from town council regarding our B district and whether or not,
Okay.
in her opinion, it complies with the state's resident mandate.
Okay, good. So we'll add that as well.
Patrick, is there anything?
Go ahead.
Formal that we need to discuss on with respect to chapter 40B and the defronza, right? Is that?
No, because that's not within our purview. I mean, they, by regulation, they're supposed to make a presentation to us at some point when they've filed. But I think there are real, they're really early stages of the process. So until they have a plan, and they've got to contact us to, you know, let us know they're ready to make that presentation.
Patrick, are they aware of the Gordon Conwell discussion?
Yes, sir, they certainly are.
Okay.
So, and there's Richard Boroff. Richard, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I just got here.
All right, very good. Well, you haven't missed anything. We're about to do a roll call to open the meeting. So we'll start with you, Richard, since you just showed up.
Richard Boroff here.
Okay, Bill?
Bill Wheaton here.
Cory? Or are you going to unmute?
Cory Bowe here.
Okay, and Marnie?
Marnie Crouch here.
All right, very good. And Rick Mitchell? So we're all here. So why don't we start off, we are very fortunate to have Alan Berry with us, a developer of Hatton Ridge. And so he's very familiar with special permit process and the development of of projects in town. So, Patrick, if you have anything you want to add, or should we just go right to Alan?
I, I do want to mention that Alan had the audacity to be the first person to attempt the senior housing bylaw here in Hamilton. So he's a man who likes a challenge.
Yeah, there you go. There's going to be a statue erected for him.
Big statue. And I, and I surmise to say it was a pretty successful development.
Yeah, thank you.
Very, very popular place.
Thank you.
Okay, so Alan, do you want to, you've got the floor now. I don't know how you'd like to do it. You just, I just opened and got the answers to the questions, I think, or you had made some notes and on various sections. I don't know if you want to go through that, or whether you want to give us a general impression.
Yeah, that probably makes the most sense. I just follow that, which is based on what Patrick sent. He's sort of following the bylaw too.
Could I just interrupt just one minute? Patrick, it's my understanding that you sent Alan kind of a draft of the questions that we were addressing. And Rick and I had looked, you know, had started working on those. I had done a draft and I had forwarded it to you and to Rick. But I don't believe the other members of the board actually got that because it was, it was really a work in process. And just to step back a little bit, what I attempted to do is take the comments from other developers and pose them as questions to the board. I didn't attempt to answer them, but just questions as to if we appreciated the comment, how we would change the language of the bylaw, whether, whether we should reorder some of the sections in the bylaw, just to be a little more consistent. So it was really taking the comments. For example, the comment of Larry Smith about the inclusionary housing bylaw, whether or not we should eliminate the requirement that the inclusionary bylaw apply to this flexible development bylaw, or whether we should leave it as being applicable, but reserve the right to modify it in some way, either in terms of the amount of the payment or the number of units that would trigger a payment. So I asked the question for purposes of discussion. And I think Alan got that early draft, which is already out of date. But I just wanted to give that by way of background. And so, Mr. Berry, just so you know, there's nothing concrete in respect to any of those issues that you saw. And, but we can still go through your comments, but I just wanted to make the board aware.
Okay, I, basically what I wrote up was based on the first drafts of the bylaw, which I had gotten in the past. And then this other issues to consider following developer comments February 20th, 2021, is that the, the item that you're talking about?
Yes, February 20th, 2021, yes.
That's what, that's what my notes relate to both of those.
Right, okay.
So, and I'll, some of the things I'll skip over that are, you know, like the first items, you know, about reorganizing it with 8.1, 2, and 3, and 4, it's totally logical. So, you know, I didn't really have any comments on that. I did make an earlier comment about the eligible locations. And what I've seen, and I live in Danvers, and I see it a lot of times in Danvers, is developers will come in and pick some of the, you know, you know, larger parcel land with a house and kind of cram in and squeeze in a development in a place really it shouldn't be. And so I was just sort of bringing that up as a caution that, you know, maybe you might want to look at that, that, you know, that someone could take one of those, you know, like a property in an established neighborhood, but it happens to have a larger piece of land and try to stick something in there that really doesn't fit in. So my, my questions were on that is maybe make it eligible to locations where it's only a vacant land. But then there may be locations where you have like a house you want to tear down that's not in an established neighborhood. So maybe leave it up to the discretion of the planning board that it isn't detrimental to the neighborhood, you know, that that could be allowed in those locations. It was just something that I've
We, we have also thought about maybe a minimum parcel size would have that effect too, that you couldn't apply this law to less than two or three acres. So that would alleviate the problem you're concerned with. Now, I think it's a real problem. I think it's an issue, yeah.
Yeah, it's just not planned out very well. You know, someone could just put these things in, like I said, I've seen it in Danvers, where they find a house with a bigger piece of land and then stick something in there in a neighborhood that, you know, it doesn't even fit into it. So I just had to brought that up as a comment, just so that, you know, you'd be aware of it and maybe think about that as far as, you know, how the bylaw is finally written. And, you know, my two comments were, you know, maybe make it eligible to only vacant land. And then maybe another step would be as if someone comes in with one that could be on an existing home on the property, that it would be up to the board to determine whether it makes sense that it's, it's a good location and not detrimental to the neighborhood. So it's probably something for further discussion. It's just a thought that I, I've seen it happen and I don't, I don't think it's a good thing in, in a, in a community to be sticking things in the wrong places. And we can talk about it more if anybody has any comments on it. But it was just sort of my, my comment on that. As far as the changes suggested on the planning board rules and regulation and the eligible eligible locations, I think that looks good. Other than I note above about, you know, maybe trying to avoid those squeeze in type of developments in places that they don't belong. Next item was limitations on flexible developments, adding paragraph one makes sense. And I'm sure on the, one of the sections, it said 100,000 to 12,000 square feet. I'm sure it meant 120, but by the time the bylaw gets written, I'm sure that'll be corrected. On definitions on the open space, there's discussions about including the septic systems in the open space. I don't believe that you're, you're going to be looking for perpetual easement, which means you got to go to, you know, the state legal department to get approval on that. And I don't think they're going to allow on open space with a perpetual easement to septic systems. I'm not an attorney, so you probably want to check with, you know, town council on that. Because you do need the maintenance of the septic systems. And, and I don't think that the state legal department would approve that.
Alan, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Can you tell me what you're thinking about this easement? I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that.
In, in the bylaw, I think it's like 22, I believe. Ownership, 8.1.23. It's saying that the ownership will be within the flexible development to be conveyed lots dwellings in perpetuity, which you'd need to go to get that approved by the state to have something perpetual typically, you know, an easement or whatever the ownership would be, wouldn't be perpetual. It's just, it's something I've dealt with in the past where, you know, we'd have to get certain things like trails approved and they have to be, you know, perpetual. And it may be, it's, it's like, it's not my, my issue, but it's more of a legal issue that I just bringing it up. So you might want to take a look at it that it may not allow the septic
So Alan, can I ask, what you mean, what you're saying is that the easement should be perpetual to the property and not to the owner? Is that correct?
No, what I'm saying is it's, if it's a perpetual easement, in order to get one of those, you have to get approval and has to go through the state's legal department. And in order to do that, it takes, you know, almost a year to get that done. I don't think they will allow the septic systems in the open space if that's what, if it's perpetual easement. So it's just something that you may want to talk to town council about. It may be a non-issue, but it's just something that I've dealt with in the past that on open space issues, I know I dealt with it in Topsfield on English Commons and also at Rola Green in Topsfield. So it's just something I'm bringing up, just, you know, you may want to talk to, you know, town council on it, just to make sure that you can put a septic system on that open space if you're looking for a perpetual easement.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Not to derail the, the conversation, Alan, can you give us just a quick description regarding those two projects as to how that open space that you mentioned is maintained now?
Well, the condominium associations on both of them maintain them. And it's part of the condominium documents. And I'm assuming that these are, these actually, the open space would not, some of these could be single family. And depending on if the open space is owned by, you know, the people that live there, or it's owned by the town, or what, you know, whatever group is allowed. But, you know, my comment about the perpetual easement on it is that, you know, you know, so it couldn't be sold later on. You know, and change, but I know dealing with in Topsfield, you know, they, they wanted the trail system to be perpetual. So that all had to be approved by the state. And I don't think they would, I don't think they were going to allow that open space portion to be include the septic systems. I could be wrong, but I'm, I just remember that being an issue.
I can see where it would be.
Yeah, so it may not be, you know, a good idea to do. But, you know, if you did talk to town council, they may be able to tell you right away. Now you can do that or no you can't. Just bring it up to make sure that, you know, it gets thought about before it becomes the final bylaw. Next one, definition, open space. Obviously, that would work, but it may be less confusing to use developable acres because it's on, on a line or column B in the matrix. And you may be more familiar with how that goes, Patrick. It says a base, base density under flex bylaws says units per developable acre. With the new language, it would say units per developable space. I think units per developable acre may make more sense, you know, to anybody that's reading it.
I think I'll make a comment here. I think that one of the other developers that preceded you noted that our town bylaw refers to lot sizes in terms of square footage. So talking about developable space was a way of getting, you know, around the issue of acres and back to square footage. So I think subsequent, subsequently, we might define developable acres as developable square footage to make it consistent with the underlying zoning districts. So that, that's the impetus there. So what you read was actually, you know, an oversight. And so it, it's, since, since the underlying zoning districts are referred to square footage, we colloquially, colloquially refer to 40,000 square feet as an acre, but it should really be consistent throughout as square feet as opposed to acres.
So maybe it should say units per developable
Square footage.
40,000 square feet or?
Yeah, exactly.
Because it, you know, reading, reading it per acre, and it says like, say, three units per acre, makes a lot more sense than three units per developable space. That's all I'm just saying, you know, how it comes across and how easily it is to understand what it means. If it isn't per acre, you know, you could say for 4,000, 40,000 square feet.
Exactly, exactly. You're, you're right.
Yeah, it's the term compact units, I think, is a lot clearer than efficiency units. You know, it makes sense that they're going to be small if it's compact. I know there was a question brought up about the absorption rate of the 1,500 square foot units. I'm not really sure how that would, you know, how fast they would be absorbed. But, you know, in your, here's the only place that it's used in the bylaws is in that matrix, which is actually allowing for a bonus. So I don't, I think the percentage of compact units that are going to be included in these as a minimum requirement or as a requirement for a bonus should be based really on what the, how many that's compact units the town would like to see. You know, if they want to see more, keep it at 50%. If, if it's not a big issue, then, you know, maybe reduce it down to 25%. If it is, if there looks like there's a good market for 1,500 square foot, you know, someone's probably going to build more of them anyways. And then my last comment on that is the, it should be a definition of compact units. And I would say it would be 1,500 square feet gross living area and wouldn't include the basement, garages, attics, et cetera. Just really the living space so that someone understands easily what a compact unit is.
Alan, somebody else commented, you should use the definition of heated space. Do you think that would accommodate or meet your concern?
Yeah, a living area is, is what's in the building code. That's why I use that, you know, heated space would be the same thing.
Okay.
But then, yeah, I guess if you, if you had a three season room, it'd be heated. So, you know, either heated or living. I, like I said, I use living area because that's what's in the building code.
Actually, I think living area would be better because a lot of people heat their garages.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I don't think you want, you don't want to be considering a garage, you know. You know, it's probably 500 square feet in the garage. You'd have 1,000 square foot units being built is, would be kind of small for people to live in.
Do you perceive that there's a market for units of 1,500 square feet of livable space?
I, you know, I don't know what that absorption rate would be. The, the problem right now is the cost of land is so high that when you go to build something, you're starting off initially with a high price of land. Then if you go and build in the site, site work, you know, building the house, you know, the site, you know, the driveway, the landscaping, the septic system, all that really doesn't change in how big the house is. So now you're going to save a little bit of money on the construction of the house, but you're still going to have the same land costs, the same site cost. So now you're going to have a very high price per square foot for a compact unit. So that's what the thing that would scare me about the absorption rate of a 1,500 square foot home is that it's going to be expensive per square foot. And people look at that all the time. The real estate agents, you know, advertise, you know, so much cost per square foot. So I really don't know what the absorption rate would be.
So question Alan is, and I think all of us are sensitive to that is the thought was to increase the density to offset the cost of land and infrastructure. So is that if you could build more and sell more compact units, you would offset the land and infrastructure?
Yeah, if, like, if, like I said before, if there, if there's a market for it, you know, someone's going to build more of them. But, but a lot of it is going to be, you know, people buying them. You know, the cost per square foot of, of the, the unit is going to be more expensive because the land, the site work costs don't really change based on the size of the house. It's really just the construction cost alone that'll change.
So what you're saying is increased density to build more units won't necessarily translate into an economic benefit?
Well, it would because you'd get, you know, depending on what the land costs were, a lower land cost price.
Right, so
So it would reflect in the compact unit.
Right, so that's the, that's the challenge we have is trying to encourage smaller units. So that they're in a price range that, you know, people can afford, but we don't want to put a requirement in that makes it uneconomic. And so it never, they never get bill. So that's our challenge there. So we're trying to figure out, okay, is the density bonus for building a smaller compact unit sufficient to encourage a potential developer?
Yeah. And actually, are you looking at that as a single family home when you're talking about a 1,500 square foot unit? Because if you're talking about a, say, a four unit building, you have four units times you have 1,500, your costs are sort of split up a little bit more shared, I guess. I know there's still four kitchens for times as many bathrooms, but it's, as a building, it's still a little bit less, correct?
Yeah, if you're looking at, you know, multifamily, you know, and getting a little further beyond, it then at 1,500 square foot would, would be a benefit. You know, keep the land costs lower. If you do a multifamily, you probably save a little bit on the site work so you can get the cost of that building down.
So another suggestion was a developer had suggested moving up to 1,800 square feet. Any comment on that?
Yeah, I think 1,800 would work. It really depends on, if it sounds like you're really looking for more compact units available in town to have a lower priced homes available. So 1,500 would, would, you could still do the 1,800. And people could build 1,500 if, if they can sell them at that, you know, the right price. So 1,800 year would, would open it up a little bit, make it easier to do. So, you know, my point is on the percentages, you know, if you, you have 25 or 50%, it really depends on, you know, how much you want to encourage it, you know, because it is only used as a bonus. So someone wants to try to get more units in, maybe, you know, multifamily or smaller sizes, you know, they, you know, they could take advantage of the bonus and get, you know, that land cost number down.
Okay, good.
The enhanced energy standards. My only comment there is it's going to be kind of difficult to quantify what, you know, what brings that, you know, I saw it said 10% of the of what's in the building code, 10% savings. Probably needs a little bit more, you know.
Yeah, we've got that same, yeah, we've had that same comment that we have to provide definition of exactly what that means and how you meet, how you meet it.
Yeah, that would, that would be something to probably want to look at and make it so it's very clear and simple.
Question, question Alan. What are your thoughts about solar applications on these kinds of projects? Does the market resist that?
I, I haven't had anybody, you know, in the homes I'm building and the developments even ask for it. So I'm not that familiar with solar other than what I see and read. So I probably wouldn't be the right person to comment on that.
Okay.
And the incentives in the matrix, you know, in general looks good, but, you know, without those notes that I talked about. But it was a little confusing reading it because the requirement a little later, 25% of the property needs to be open space. But when you read the matrix, if you have 25%, which is the minimum, which you're required to do, it also gives you a 0.25 bonus for it. I don't know if you intended that. Or, you know, if you do the minimum, you still get a bonus, but you can't do that below the minimum anyways. That makes sense?
Right, you can still, you can still get a minimum. If you do the minimum, you can still get some density bonus. But remember, you have to also pay into the the opens, the open space fund for whatever bonus you get.
Okay, I just didn't know if you intended that if you did the minimum, you still get a 25% bonus. That was, that's my question. You know, if you typically, if you do the minimum, you don't get a bonus for it because you haven't done anything beyond the requirement. You know, like if, I would say that the way I would have expected it is if you get 25% of the land is open space and you get zero bonus for that. But if you did 50% of the land is open space, now you're going to get 25% more than the minimum. And so it was intended to give you 25% bonus just to meet the minimum.
Well, Bill, I I think that's because this is an overlay district. So that if, if you do not choose to, to use this, then you don't have to set any land aside for an open space and you fall back on the, on the zoning. And if you want to go beyond that, then you have to set us.
Okay, but there is a bonus just applying under the new bylaw from the, the current zoning to the base density.
Yes, yes.
So this would be on top of that. It's just only a comment because, you know, to me, typically, if you're doing the minimum, that's required, you wouldn't get a bonus for that. But if that's, if you're trying to encourage this, that would actually make it more palatable to do a, you have this flexible development. palatable to do a, you have this flexible development. Um, the other thing I noticed on there, um, you, you, there was a question about changing, um, you know, the base density, you get 50 to 60% of the base density for R1 and R, R, R1B and RA. Um, instead of what was already written on the original one, I don't know if that makes a big difference, um. You know, because you do get a density, you know, a bonus for it, but it would also make it confusing then if you had the minimum, which would be the, the 25% now, if you, if you jumped it up to 50, does that mean you get a 50% bonus by meeting the minimum? If you look at, uh, column E of the matrix, there was a suggestion, not a suggestion, but a, um, the question was, uh, should this be amended to 50 to 75%? The next one, should this be amended to 60 to 75%? Based on what we were just talking about, the, the 25% minimum area, does that mean if you adjusted those up to 50 to 75 and 60 to 75? And you met the minimum 25%, do you get 50% bonus? Does that make sense?
Yes.
If we, if we changed the bylaw with that new, you know, the new, um, the new bonus now would say 50 to 75% to say the R1B. So that means if you had 25% of the land open space, does that mean you get 50% for that? And then if you get 50% of the open space, you still get 50%?
Hmm. I don't think that's the intent.
Uh, yeah, I don't think so either.
I think it's.
We have to look at that. We'll have to go look.
I think we have to, have to look at that because I think one of the comments that we had received in the past was that the minimum amount of open space should be increased. Um, in the R1B and RA districts. But in, in asking that question, I don't think, um, there was consideration of how that would actually affect uh, the calculations set forth in the matrix. So we'd have to go back and actually look at that. So.
You know what I mean by that though, right?
Yeah, I think so.
It says, it says here, you know, that you get a 50% bonus. If you only have, still have the minimum, which is the bottom, the bottom, the bottom end of that, that range. So if you have the minimum 25% uh, open space, you get 50% bonus. The way it's, the way it's written. And then on the next, uh, the RA, you'd get a 60% bonus to have the minimum.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. It should be cumulative. You get a base density, then you build based on your, uh, you know, compact house efficiency, water standards, additional open space. Isn't that the way it was, uh, you intended it, Bill?
Yes, I think, I think there's some misunderstanding. Um, um.
I think we had, I think that, that Bill, until you see, we, we put that, I put that in and, and I apologize for this because you haven't seen it. I actually put that in the matrix with the question mark, but I didn't adjust the matrix to reflect that in any way. But I don't, I, if you recall, I, and I don't recall which developer it was, but um, they suggested that instead of a 25% minimum set aside in the R1B and RA districts, that it should be, um, incrementally increased. So a larger set aside for R1B and an even larger set aside for RA. So that, so there was a question.
Would you, would, would you send that to me? Because then that, that would change all the calculations quite a lot.
Absolutely. And, and, and if, uh, I think what our, my intent was, and I, 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 I sent him a preliminary copy to Patrick was to incorporate everything and then do a final version that would be circulated um, among all the board members. So, um, Mr. Barry got a, an early view of this, but it's, uh, by no means the, the final, um, uh, draft of the document that, um, I started working on. And it was really just a summary of the developers' comments and whether we should, um, accept them, reject them, modify them or whatever. And I tried to do it in the context of the text of the bylaw. And, you know, to be candid, when I came to the matrix, uh, my editing skills failed me and I, and I left certain things, uh, the way they were and it, it confused Mr. Barry and everyone else.
Marnie, would you send that to all of us, please?
Yes. Yeah, just.
It's going to be finalized and I'll send it to Patrick and then he will send it to everyone.
Okay.
I fully intended to do that, but, uh, I was waiting to hear Mr. Barry's comments in, in relation to the list of questions that we had.
Okay. Okay. So I just suggest then if, if the, uh, if we're going to go with 25% of, there's a minimum open space and you get a 25% bonus, then on R1B, if it's, you know, 35%, then maybe the bottom, the, the bottom range should be 35% bonus and so forth. So that because if it's, if it's showing it at 50% and you do the minimum at 25, you still get 50%, but if you get 50% open space, you, um, I have to put a battery charger in. If you get, um, 50% of the open space, you still only get 50%. So it doesn't seem fair that, that you don't get any bonus for giving additional open space.
Oh, I, I think you would. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. But I think if you change the minimum open space requirements for each zoning district and then have the bottom end of that range on column E to match it, then you'd, you'd be doing the same thing you're doing for our, our one A. Uh, last thing on the matrix, um, the formula is, uh, $50,000 times column F minus column A. Um, and so if you take those, uh, say column F on, uh, R1A is 6.75 and column A is two units. So it'd be 4.75 times 50,000, which is, uh, only 237,500. And on the, uh, on the matrix here, it's, it's calling out 337.5. Uh, same thing on the next one. It's, it says that the payment will be 225,000 for the upper end. It's really calculates out to 175. And on the RA, it calculates out to 87.5 rather than 112.5. And I know the lower end is the minimum payment so that the unit count wouldn't change that. And it may have been, as it went through different stages and changes that, uh, the original, uh, 50,000 might've been a different number. You checking the math?
So I don't have the matrix in front of me, Bill. Are you, uh?
I'm trying to look. We'll just.
Yeah, you're just making.
The math. I'm not.
Mathematical thing.
No, you're correct. The math you're doing is correct. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, and it probably was, you know, the 50,000 times F minus A might've been 60,000 or a different number previously. I just wanted to bring it up to you.
Okay.
Uh, minimum distance between projects. That sounds good. Um, inclusionary housing. I made my comment on this because I've dealt with it before and, and different projects, but if you do, if you're thinking of, you know, these homes are going to be for sale and not rental units. Uh, it really doesn't work. Um, what happens is you, um, you get a buyer, there's real strict qualifications to be able to purchase. Typically say it's a family of four. Uh, you can only make, say, $50,000 a year. Uh, minimum price to buy the unit is 200,000. You need a minimum of 5% down. So that'd be 10,000. So this guy that's, has a family of four, he's making $50,000. He's got to save $10,000 cash to be able to buy it as a down payment. And then he's going to still have, you know, taxes and keep all the other expenses that are owning a house. But there's a deed restriction that you can't raise the, the selling price of the house other than what, you know, normal inflation. So this guy has gone through years and years of paying for his house. And he goes to sell it. He, he's not going to receive any return on his investment. So it doesn't make any sense for him to even do that. He'd be better off renting an apartment. And if he has his $10,000, try to invest it someplace rather than coming out with nothing at the end of that period of time. And if the market crashes and you might lose money on it. So I don't think it, it works for, for sale units. It works well for rental units, the inclusionary housing. It just my comment on it. Um, you know, for why I did, why I think it doesn't work. Uh, the next item, um, I didn't quite have enough time today to go back and reference, uh, but it talked about, I think it was the general conditions for 8.113. Yeah, general requirements and it referenced doing, uh, something similar to the senior housing bylaw, 8.215. I just didn't get enough time to comment on that. So that's why that's blank. Um, the parking, um, I agree that the R1A, you know, they're going to be smaller pieces of land, you know, making requirement of too much parking, you know, is, is going to give, create more land that's covered up by pavement, you know, not, it may not even be needed. Um, there, uh, the payment fees, the remedies and all that, that, that sounded fine to me. Uh, on 8.122, um, I just thought sometimes almost like on Patton Ridge, we, you know, we kept from the existing road, we kept an open space in there so that you know, the existing roads aren't really impacted by these type of developments because you do have open space in the front. Uh, it all depends, you know, 25% may end up being the whole open space in the front. And then that's not really what you're looking for either. Um, but it was just a suggestion that you may want to look at that, that if you're building, if you're doing these on an existing road that you, you may want to have a little separation from the road, a little buffer, you know, and set the distance from the house to the, to the existing street back a little bit. Just a suggestion. You know, sometimes it, it works. I think it worked well at Patton Ridge. Um, I did the same thing up at Caldwell Farm up in Newbury. Uh, we, we kept a, a good buffer between the street and so it wasn't really a big impact on, on the neighborhood because it was setback and a lot of open space in the front. Uh, on, uh, 8122.6, it said 50% of the open space can be wetlands. It seems like a lot, you know, if you're a lot of the parcels, you know, in town are, are going to have quite a bit of wetlands on it. So they're going to just use whatever, you know, there's the open space that you're going to get anyways. So I don't know if that really benefits you as far as getting more open space in town where nobody's going to develop the wetlands anyways. You know, so you're really only getting 12, I mean, 25% of, um, of, of, uh, upland and, um, 25% of wetlands in your open space out of the whole property. Just something, just something to look at. Um, I, I'm thinking that, you know, you're going to get the wetlands, um, wetlands will be open space anyways because you can't build on them. And probably a lot of the buffer zones. So if you say 50% of it is wetlands, you're not really gaining any open space that you would have already had anyways.
So do you have a number? Can you suggest a number? Would you say 25% or?
Yeah, I mean, 25 is probably a reasonable number. 50 seems like a lot, you know, and if you're looking to gain open space on a piece of property, you know, say the property is wet, you're going to, they're going to take all the wetlands, throw it into open space. So you're only going to get, and that would have always been open space. You're only going to get a small piece left. So 25% would probably make more sense. You know, if the intent is to try to save open space. And then the, the last item I had was, you know, 8.123, which talked about the ownership in perpetuity. Um, again, just going back, you know, it's a legal question that town council could probably answer if the septic systems can be allowed in that, that area.
Alan, I have, um, a question. Uh, thank you for going through this in detail. Um, did you went and, and reviewed the document that Patrick sent you in terms of what Marnie had, uh, developed? Were you able to read the entire, the entire bylaw? Or were you responding to the comments that Patrick sent you that were developed by Marnie?
I did both.
Okay.
The original draft and, uh, and the comments, uh, because I did, I did, uh, send a note earlier, um, when you first started this with some comments on that, which I readdressed in what I did today too.
Okay. So we did actually have some questions and, and with the forbearance of the other board members, I'll, I'll go through those unless
Sure.
Have other things they want to address?
We'll forbear you. You can go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the general question was, do the density bonuses, um, provide sufficient, uh, financial incentive for somebody like you to use this bylaw?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's similar to what you did in the senior housing, um, or elderly housing. Um, so I think, you know, there's definitely an incentive, um, you know, by getting additional units in it. It really depends a lot on, you know, where the property is, um, you know, the, the shape of the land, the topography and all that, if you can even get all the units in. But I think it is definitely, you know, an incentive to do this.
Okay.
And a lot of it too is, you know, like say the compact units, for instance. Yeah. As long as you have a market for something like that, you're, you're going to get more and more use of that. Even, you know, we talked about earlier, multifamily, you know, definitely right then you, it's going to help.
Okay. Um, and based on the, your experience, did you any sense of which zoning district you think might be most, um, used under this bylaw? Now we have the R1A and then the RA, which obviously has, you know, more potentially more space.
I would say that the RA probably would because it's more, more of it available. Uh, where, you know, the, the one A is, is probably pretty highly developed right now, you know, one B maybe a little bit less, but so I think maybe just on availability, RA is probably going to get, you know, the most.
Okay, great. Um, and then which density, which of those density bonuses would you gravitate towards or avoid?
Hmm. I never really thought about that. Um, it's probably most likely going to be what, what lands available and, you know, and you know, if it's in a good location, more than, you know, what the bonuses are, you sort of, you know, you know what they are and you work with them. Um, you know, I think you need, you know, what I'm going to look for is, you know, the right property, the right area, um, and try to work, you know, based on what ends up being in the vote, in the bylaws. You know, not so much saying, okay, I like this. I'm going to go look for land in that zoning district. You know, because it's not, it's only. I'm going to go look for land in that zoning district, you know, because it's not, it's only going to be available where it's for sale anyways.
Right. So the density bonuses criteria are are going to be dependent on what what piece of land you find, I guess is what you're saying.
Yeah. And if you and if you're looking to encourage more more development towards the 1A or even the 1B, you know, then by increasing the required, the minimum open space in those zoning districts would make it more, put more incentive to to build in the the 1A areas. You know, if that's if that's what the intent is. If if the the town is intending, you know, they would like to see more built in the 1A, you know, a little bit little bit less than 1B and even less than RA, then changing the open space requirements, making it higher in the the RA versus the 1A, that would, you know, that would encourage you to to look more closer into town.
Got it. Okay, that's a good comment. And then, uh, comment on the open space fund. We were all looking for a dollar amount, you know, that reasonable.
Is the the purpose of that, um, to acquire more open space in town with that those funds?
Well, the idea was that it's a trade off of if we're giving you more density. We'd like to, um, do whatever we can to, or to the greatest extent possible, it's open space. So this was, oh, we'll give you more density. But if you want more density, then you're going to have to pay for it. And then those excess funds would go to base.
Yeah, I mean, which would make sense because you're given more density here. So you'd have funds to purchase other properties to keep in open space. So 150 for, so it's basically $50,000 per unit is a fee to get into this to start with. And then pretty much 50 for each bonus unit.
Yes, right.
Yeah, it's that would be as long as the market is strong enough, that would work. Because, you know, you just have to increase the the sales price of the the house to cover that cost.
Yeah, that that's where the comment came in. Well, if you want both the open space and the affordable housing, um, can't have both in terms of asking for payment in lieu of, you know, or the affordable, um, component. So that's why Marnie had actually introduced the concept of maybe it needs to be minimized or maybe it's discretionary with the planning board. But you can't have both two socially desirable outcomes because it overburdens the cost.
Yeah, again, it depends on where the real estate market is doing, you know, right, right now, it's, you know, it's strong. But also, you know, for new construction, you know, cost of construction skyrocketed in the last year because of lumber. Uh, COVID shutdowns and plants, you know, everything's gone up. So you have to increase, you know, your sales price to cover those costs if you're going to build something new. And then you'd add this to it, you know, it may put you over the top where, you know, what you can actually get for a unit versus what it costs you to do, your numbers might not work.
Yes.
But if the market, you know, if construction, you know, lumber goes down, which it should, you know, and COVID gets taken care of and people started, you know, the factories are all opening up, you know, materials are coming out faster, you know, supply and demand, the prices should go down. Uh, which would make, you know, the payment a lot easier, you know, right now, it's, you know, it's hard to, you know, even though things are selling for a high price, it's still hard to make all the numbers work. So it's and it's pretty hard. You can't just charge it to some people and not to others, you know, which wouldn't be fair. But, uh, I don't know if making that number flexible for the with the planning board based on market conditions. But that's probably a hard one to quantify. Because you don't know what the market conditions are.
Right. Okay, you're not, you're not going to get us out of that dilemma. Okay.
I'll I'll put some thought into it.
Yeah. And then compared to the senior housing by law with up to four units per acre. Does the flexible development by law provide a financially viable, attractive alternative to building market rate housing? It sort of was the same question we had asked earlier. But we're trying to get a does, would a developer look at the senior housing by law and say, well, gee, this is really easier. Provides better incentives. I'm going to go there versus flexible development by law. It, you know, is there, I don't know if you had a chance to think about that is one more track.
Yeah.
If you, uh, if you have four units per acre, I'll call it an acre.
Yes.
For the for the elderly housing, and this is, say, three units per acre. You get a more of a market because you're not just selling to people over 55, you know. So you have a little bit more, uh, market to work with, which helps. If you're doing smaller sized units, you know, that could help, you know, younger couple. But, you know, once they start having kids, that probably not going to help them much. So I think it's fair, you know, that, you know, having it open market would be not quite as much of a bonus as a senior housing because senior housing, you know, is just tighter market. You know, you're you're dealing with people pretty much from 55 to 75 that, you know, sometimes a little up to 80. But, um, you know, after that point, you know, I've, I don't see many people in any of the over 55 developments we've done that were 80 years and older. You know, typically they're 55 to 75 is kind of a good range.
Tighter market, you mean it's a smaller market?
Well, you only have a 20 year span of people that are buying where, you know, you'd probably have 25 or 30 years or the lower price in and open market.
Okay.
And that and that would also include over 55 in the over market. So it would be a much span.
Right. And this sort of the next question kind of like answered, but I'll ask this anyway. Is there a market or the kinds of, um, housing that we're talking about where you're allowing multifamily, single family, duplex, um, you know, higher density? Is there a market out that for the out there for this kind of approach?
Well, once you, one and two family, you know, usually pretty easy to be able to sell those. Once you get into more than two, now you're couple of things happen when, you know, the building code changes. Um, you know, you get a fire sprinkle of the buildings, you know, there's a lot, a lot stricter codes once you get over the three units. So it makes it more expensive to build. Also, the middle units are real difficult to sell because they have no windows on sides, just really the front and back of the house.
Yeah.
So it makes that more difficult to sell. So you you end up in getting in a lower, you know, lower price for them. And then the more units you have in a building, the, you know, the worse that gets. You know, the end units in a two unit building, you at least have three windows and walls.
Okay.
So that's why I'm thinking, you know, that in an RA district, I don't know how many people are going to want to go more out into the country to be in a multifamily.
Yeah.
And then are those intended to be condominiumized or are they intended to be apartments? You know, you know, when you get into these, you know, two story, you know, flat type of units, stuff like that.
Okay. Um, and any changes you'd suggest making to this by law? Other than the ones you've already discussed.
No, I think I I covered some of the items in here and the, uh, you know, the issues to consider. There's some of just my own that I I noticed and mentioned. So it's pretty much covered everything that I could see, you know, think a little bit more about it for you and, you know, what I see in the, you know, the market as far as, you know, what goes. So if you're going to still continue working on this, I'll put some more time into it and try to make more comments on those those issues we talked about that I couldn't answer.
Well, what would be actually helpful is once we, uh, we're going to take all the comments from, I think, about five different developers and synthesize those and 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 cogitate over, you know, how we incorporate those and then have a final draft. That would be great if you could look at the final draft before we take it public. So, um, we don't embarrass ourselves sort of.
Yes, we do have to check our math.
Yeah, yeah.
The copy of the matrix that I have is has exactly the errors that that Alan pointed out. But I don't want to, Marnie, you you send me what you have. So we'll we'll make sure that we correct the one that goes into.
Yeah, I didn't change any of the math in the matrix. I just put some question marks in the matrix. So, uh, but once you see the comments, then maybe the math can be adjusted or whatever. So.
Okay. So the question is, is once we've got a, we've corrected our language and and matrix and math and hopefully got everything, um, right. Is that something you'd be willing to take a look at again and, you know, before we take it up? Just to make sure that we've got, um, current comments on a document that's we're ready to move with.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I would be happy to do that.
That'd be great. Because the whole point of this is, um, we want to put forth something that's actually going to be utilized by people like yourself.
Yeah. No, and I'll I'll continue looking at it, too. I'm sure, you know, there, the more times I go through it, the more things you're seeing, you know, you just, you know, just normally happens that way. So I'll I'll keep looking and, you know, and some of your comments and questions today that I couldn't answer, I'll look into those a little bit more, too.
Yep, yep. And and don't be afraid to be, uh, critical or, you know, direct in just saying, hey, guys, I don't think this works or this just make any sense.
Yeah, no, I'll I'll say what I what I see and and not, I try to hurt your feelings at the same time.
Uh, that'd be hard to do.
It's okay.
Um, any, does anybody else have a question for Alan? Okay, I I think you've done a wonderful job in helping us and thank you so much for taking the time to invest in doing so.
Oh, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for the level of detail in your comments, Alan.
Oh, thank you. Well, we'll get to, we'll get more information in there and try to get it out, right?
All right, great. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, bye bye. Okay. Um, now I think we're going to move on to the, um, commercial district. And Patrick, I'm going to sort of pass that over to you because you prepared the PowerPoint presentation.
Right. So I did send that out to everybody, uh, so you have that. Why don't I just quickly walk through information and the approach?
Can you put that up on the screen?
Do I do that by simply going to my email?
You should be able to open the document.
Once you have the document open and you click on share screen, it's going to give you an option to choose what gets shared. You kind of share everything or specific documents. So probably safer to just share the specific document.
Oh, we got the, we saw the email.
Wrong one. You have to open up the PowerPoint on your desktop outside of Zoom, then you go back into Zoom. And it'll give you the option of sharing it.
I can share the version I have if it helps you get down.
Yeah.
I don't have PowerPoint. I have this version here.
Yeah.
There you go.
Chap through it. Let me know when you want a new page or a new slide.
Yeah, like I say, this is the, uh, the cover page. The second page is just, uh, the graphic of the existing zoning where you see the business district in the, uh, the light purple. And across Bay Road, you see the area, which is R1A, uh, which includes, uh, let's see, Carriage Lane includes the public safety building right here. Council on Aging and sort of in front of it. And then the Winthrop School to the, uh, north northeast. So, uh, that's the the basic land area that we're talking about. Next slide, Karen. Okay. This gives you just a little bit different or a little better view as to what's existing right now. Uh, in terms of the school building, in terms of the athletic fields in the back. Uh, you see some of the mature vegetation back behind the school, the athletic fields. Uh, and then back behind the public safety building. Uh, and all of that vegetation nicely buffers the residential district that's further to the south, southeast. Next slide, please. Thank you, Corey. And, um, we've looked at a little bit of the information. Uh, as I had mentioned, uh, as far as we know, there's no wetlands in the area. There's no real, uh, utility, public utilities that traverse the Winthrop School property except for there is a drain that connects the Weaver Pond over here, uh, with the Miles River that's further to the east of the property. So next slide, please.
Thank you. Excuse me, how many acres are included in the Winthrop School property itself?
Uh, let's see, I think.
Twelve.
Looks like 11.9 is if I'm reading that.
Yeah, 11.9. Yeah, 11.92, I believe.
And then it looks like, back up. Looks like the public safety building is, I read this. Is that three or is that two point or three point two? I'm trying to read that.
No, I can't read that. It's too fuzzy for me.
Yeah, it's kind of fuzzy. Sorry about that.
I don't know. It looks like three-ish, three something.
All right. So 13 and then probably the council on aging is maybe in one acre.
One, yeah, top.
So, so, so.
15, 16 total right here.
Yeah, let's call it 15 acres just for.
Less the carriage line section.
Okay. That's a pretty big lot of land.
Yeah. And it's all generally flat. Uh, I can tell you on the public safety building site, a great deal of the land area around it is serving as a septic field for that building.
Yeah.
So, next slide. Thank you, Corey. Uh, this gives you a little bit better view out in a way shows you the relation to the river. The water bodies further to the east, Tobacco. It gets gravelly pond. Next slide, please. Here we started three different approaches, this being Concept A, which was basically the approach of taking all of the subject area, including the residential portion here along Carriage Lane, including also the public safety building, council on aging, as well as the Winthrop School lumping that all together into one zone, which would be the B zone. Next slide, please. Thank you, Corey. This would be the concept of using the business zoning along the frontage parcels of Route 1A, leaving those residential parcels of existing use in the rear as it is in residential R1A.
And so can I just jump in here? So looking at the bottom left hand of this graphic, is it the three? Three sites are those within the current commercial district. The last one is, looks like two, I can't read that, 220.
229?
At 229?
Yeah, it's 227, 228, 229.
No, 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 no. Yeah, go south though.
Okay, so 227 is the bottom one.
Well, no.
Well, that's 46 that you're pointing at.
Now, the, the bottom one is not marked. So what I'm trying to establish is where is the current? That's.
Your current one is at 227. So anything north.
Okay, thank you.
Of, of 227.
Got it. Okay, so that's.
Outside the business district.
Yeah, exactly right.
Yeah. So slide three shows 227 is the end of it.
Okay, got it. So it's the two parcels south of, uh, yeah, got it. It's the two parcel south of Carriage Lane and then everything north.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. So you're incorporating those two that abut Bay Road.
Wait a minute.
And then.
They're frontage and, you know, recognizing they as frontage parcels would have a better ability to be commercially used.
Got it. No, got it. Just wanted to make sure. So it's three parcels that potentially become part of the commercial district.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Thank you, Corey. And then this would be the approach where all of the existing residential parcels through there that are already residential remain as such. And then we just wrap the commercial B zoning over to the public safety building, council on aging and the Winthrop School.
That's good. That's very helpful.
So 32 is the police station, right? And 32A is the council on aging?
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Um, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
A thought I have is looking at this is you might also consider taking a buffer strip that runs from uh, 1A uh, parallel to the school with maybe a hundred feet wide to separate off the neighborhoods to the northeast. Those newer neighborhoods, give them a little buffer too. Yeah, that's right. Just like that. Yep.
Yep. Good idea.
And that might assuage some of their fears that some commercial building was going to, you know, butt right up next to their property.
Sure.
It's the same idea as what you're doing down in the, in that other area.
Yeah. No, good point.
So I, I just personally speaking, B actually looks good. Uh, where you incorporate those because those are the most likely to become part of the commercial district anyway. Um, and I know people are going to say, well, that's going to be controversial and the homeowners might say, gee, you're really impacting the value of my house. But I actually think that's going to potentially increase the value of their house because not only can it be residential, but it could potentially commercial. And it opens up the potential uh, different uses on those parcels. And it makes a lot more sense to have them, the whole district be contiguous. But that's just my opinion.
I would sort of echo what, I would echo what Rick was saying if with the addition of that little strip. But I think, I think the idea of having contiguous use along Bay Road is good. And I also think as a real estate economist, you're right, Rick, that um, you can't make those areas any more residential than they are, whereas the ability to convert to commercial might actually, uh, it wouldn't hurt their value, might increase it.
Right.
Like for a matter of public safety and pedestrian flow from say the MBTA or shopping center to what would become the development at Winthrop is necessary to keep a pathway for that on both sides of Bay Road and not force the crossing of of the highway.
That might be true.
Yeah, exactly. And also it just, it allows the HDC to invest in a larger area. Not that we're going to be doing anything in the next 10 years with this, with the, certainly with the Winthrop School because it's going to take that long for them to figure out get financing approval if they were it to move that building. But, you know, potentially we could be doing things like signage and maybe a bicycle A or do sidewalks or, you know, something along those lines to try and connect that part of town to the commercial district.
What building was it you were talking about that would be potentially removed?
No building would be.
I thought you said something like that.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, my mistake. Sorry.
Looking at this map, and I just throw this out and I don't have any idea whether it would be remotely feasible. But if there was any pushback from people on Carriage Lane, those not abutting Bay Road. If you look at Locust Street, if there were similar to the buffer that Bill mentioned, uh, uh, you could make a right of way from Locust Street to the end of Carriage Lane and cut off Carriage Lane entirely from Bay Road and have access from Locust Street. But using.
Yeah, but that would, that would require, oh, I see what you're saying.
You say we could use part of the public safety building land to create a right of way. I, again, I just looking at it, it dawned on me. So if, if, if there was any kind of problem, that's a potential solution.
I think there's a gas main there.
Yeah, that, that's a right of way for a high pressure gas main.
Oh, well.
You'd have to go.
Good idea, Marty.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's, it's not out of the ballpark. We don't know what kind of reception we'll get from the people on Carriage Lane. I agree that it makes sense to keep the lots abutting Bay Road as part of the business district, but that the residents of Carriage Lane who don't abut Bay Road may have, you know, concerns.
Well, I, I think you can almost always predict of what the reaction is going to be. Um, is, and this is in general, wherever you are in town, is people do not like change. So when they hear that, you know, that there some parcels of land may be rezoned commercial, they're going to fear the worst that, oh, you're going to put a Walmart right in front of my, right next to my house. That I can guarantee you that's going to be the reaction. They're not going to go, wow, that's a really good idea. You're going to improve the value of my house and you're going to make the commercial district contiguous. Uh, so I just want to lay that out. We that no matter what we do anywhere in town, that people will not be happy. So that, that's a given. But I like the ideas that Bill had and Marty had. Are there things that we can do to mitigate or address those concerns? As we're having this discussion.
One of the things that I should do is to get some input from the fire department relative to the fire safety access component of it.
Yeah, I was going to say these, these guys are rather isolated in the end. I mean, save for an idea such as Marty had where you connect them through the locusts or some other pathway. These four homes end up just on, on a sort of residential island where, you know, the Bay Road homes can change or alter. And I wonder if maybe A then Concept A becomes more viable because it allows all of them to potentially make use of any financial gain seen from converting from residential to business. Um, or if there's actually reason to leave them B. I mean, I see a reason to leave them B because they are functioning and uh, doing fine on their own.
Well, the thing is, there is no, there's no business potential for houses on a cul-de-sac, but there is business potential when you're along Route 1A. So they.
I understand that. I mean, as, as a land mass that gives these owners an opportunity to, uh, you know, to combine.
Yeah, this is, this is.
You were thinking, Bill.
This is going to be the or, or the downtown people especially on, uh, is it carriage or cottage? It's carriage.
Cottage, carriage, carriage, yeah.
Um, you know, this is going to be a big deal. So uh, it's going to be the path of least resistance in getting this done. Just because, you know, uh, it's better to do it incrementally, slowly incrementally. I mean, we've heard, or I've heard some people say, well, okay, if you're going to do that before you ask town meeting to vote on this, you really do should do renderings of what might replace Winthrop School. Well, you know, we could do that. No. But, um, so there's a real sales process that goes into making this happen. Um, and minimizing potential negative impacts. So I'm kind of like thinking of B. You know, with potentially, uh, you know, with Bill's suggestion of a buffer and, you know, can you extend focus? I don't think so because of that high pressure line. I think those dotted lines to the bottom of this picture, I think that denotes the right of way for the high pressure line. Um, no, 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 no. It's right there. Yeah, that one. I think that's the high pressure. But I don't know that. Um, so, but anyway, I mean, there's, you know, there's a way to get around it, maybe. So the question is, what do we want to do next?
Okay, back to that high pressure between 39, 41 and 42, there's some dotted line. Is that, that's not high pressure too, is it? Because that looks just similar to the pressure lines.
No.
At 38.
Yeah, yeah, I see those. I don't think that's the case, but I don't know that.
So you're not talking about 38, 39, 40, 41 at all?
No, no.
Okay, I thought you were.
Cause there's a trail that, I mean, goes behind Cumberland Farms and, you know, you can walk right down to, um, actually goes down to Myopia.
Yeah, it goes down behind Myopia. It used to run right across our front yard on Bridge Street. It's the old right of way for a spur rail line that went to Essex. And the gas company bought it up. Uh, I don't know how long ago. And they put in the high pressure line to bring gas actually all the way down to Essex.
Yep.
It's about an 18 inch pipe.
Hmm. That's a lot of gas.
Yes. Well, it's for the whole town of Essex. It's not just.
So question is, what are the, what does the board feel like doing with this?
I mean, dealt with the gas company quite, quite a lot.
One, one person at a time, please.
Go ahead. Are you talking, go ahead, Bill. I would just say, I don't think the gas company cares about zoning. They care very much about what you do on.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. They have flyover drones that monitor everything and, uh, but I don't think they care about zoning per se.
Yeah, and they're probably not going to let or want a like locust crossing over their right of way. Although, you know, Bay Road does, so I.
Oh, yeah, they, we, our driveway went, went, went across it. It's, it's buried eight feet underground, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah, that's really deep.
Good to know.
So does, in general, do people feel comfortable with zoning Concept B? With a buffer on the, to the rear of the Winthrop School and then maybe exploring whether it's possible to connect locusts to uh, carriage?
I think B makes the most sense to me with, with the addition of the buffer along the, I can't, the northeast line there.
Yeah, I mean, looking at, we can look at possibilities connecting locusts and carriage, but I'm going to guess that whoever plot 35 is, is going to lose half their yard just to do it. Cause you're not going to be able to go through these other houses. You'd have to go into the pink area and connect. So you're going to cut off.
So it probably would make, that would make sense. We can do maybe an options analysis and just say, is it possible to move uh, extend locust across the uh, right of way, gas pipeline right of way and connect it to carriage? Um, and yet, you know, yes or no, so that that's an option that we could then discuss. Once we take this public, we've got to, you know, bring this and have public hearings and say, well, here's option one, leave it the way it is, but make those. Leave it the way it is, but make those three properties part of the commercial zone that abut Bay Road and leave the map as it's shown in concept B, adding a buffer to the rear of the Winthrop School. Or another option is the same, but connect Carriage to Locust.
Are there, are there any houses on those, like 54 and the others down towards Carriage? Any houses on those properties?
Yes, they're showing houses.
They're selling houses?
No, there's, it looks to be marked on the map here that there's a house in each of those parts of the land.
Yeah, each of those, each of those plots have houses on them, as you would.
So the, the, on the, on the colored map, the blue stuff is that, are those houses?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, fine. That's what I didn't realize.
So how does that, how did my suggestion sound?
Well, if you're going to do a road between Locust and Carriage, you're going to probably have to move it to the north off the properties of those houses.
Yes, that, that was the whole idea is exploring whether we could get a road over the right-of-way to connect to Carriage using the town's existing land to the north of Locust.
Do they want that?
Who?
Yeah, what's, what?
No, no, we don't know that. What I'm just saying is, as the next step in developing this concept is take concept B and say, okay, here's concept B. We could just leave it the way concept B is now shown, but adding a buffer at the rear of the Winthrop property, as you suggested, Bill. Or option, and that would be B. And then B1 would be option, can we connect Locust to Carriage? As a potential option to explore? And if the answer is yes, I'd say, okay, we have option B, we have B1. Then, you know, make sure that public safety, the police and fire would, would be okay with that, DPW. And then just say, okay, let's take this to a larger public discussion. Invite in the neighbors of the three properties that could become part of the commercial zone or concept B, as well as other neighbors that abut Winthrop. And, you know, have this discussion and say, here's what we're entering. And get the public's feedback.
Before, before I open, before I would open up the issue of connecting those two roads, I would somehow want to find out whether that was either something that these folks had long dreamed of, or something that they were completely scared of.
Right.
Then they would have a, you know, a connecting loop off of 1A, and they would say, well, that just means more traffic. And, you know, through traffic as opposed to having our lovely little quiet dead-end street.
Yep, yep, yep. No, I, I get it.
And the, yeah.
Oh, actually, my, my thought was to just cut off the access. They might not appreciate that, but cut off the access to the residential lots on Carriageway. So that they actually entered their property from north on Bay Road. But that would be their choice.
Well, they can't, they can't do that. There have to be Carriage Lane because some of the properties don't abut Bay Road.
No, but if you were able to give them other access through Locust Street.
Or Walnut Ranch.
You'd have to extend Locust.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what we're talking, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Could Carriage not, could like curb to Walnut Road and?
Well, then you're doing land takings.
You're going to do a lot of, yeah, on land takings on some very small lots.
Yeah, and you don't want to do that.
Part of the problem is Carriage Lane doesn't have the same width as Locust. So it can't handle the same kind of traffic that Locust can have or handle.
Well, anyway, we're not going to solve this. What I'm trying to do is see if we can take a next step here and get its consensus as to what that next step with this, this concept B, something people feel comfortable with as a, using as a discussion moving forward with concept B. And then thinking about what are the options that would be included in this? Bill has suggested one. The other option is, would it make sense to consider ending Locust north through the, across the high-pressure line and through the public safety and school land and connect it with Carriage Lane? Does that work as a next step?
Patrick, you, Patrick, you might have a conversation with some people at the DPW and see if this is, this road connection is something that they've ever considered or whether there's been any, you know, public request from the people there to do this. You know, see if there's any history there before we open it up.
Can do.
Well, yeah, and before we open it up to the general public, as we could find out, not only to what you suggest, Bill, but is it legally possible to cross, and you're saying it is, Bill, cross that right-of-way, high-pressure line, that right-of-way? And does the DPW think connecting Locust to Carriage makes any sense? Because as Richard said, those are two different streets. Carriage is a narrow little street, and they may love it that way.
Yeah.
So.
It's kind of a quaint area.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. So they may just say, hell, no, you know, that's going to be a throughway. People are going to cut through to get to Locust.
That would be my fear, yeah.
You know, so, so my only recommendation here is just to explore the option. Is it even possible to do that, extend Locust to Carriage? Have that as an internal discussion. So if somebody comes back and says, nope, can't do that, then we're, we're back to where we were, concept B. That's what we're going with.
I'm on it.
Okay. Okay.
Good, good.
All right.
Actually, we've done some city planning tonight.
Uh-oh. Warning, warning, danger.
That'll get you in trouble every time.
Oh, boy.
I know, yeah, and it's all Bill's fault.
Corey, thanks for your help there.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, what do we got now?
Uh, let's see.
You wanted to bring up the legal counsel's opinion on the requirement under the new
Right.
law that, it says MBTA communities must designate a zone within half a mile of an MBTA station. Is it half a mile or a mile?
Half a mile.
It was half a mile.
Half a mile to accommodate at least 15 units per acre.
Here is the upshot of her opinion. It is her opinion, subject to additional DHCD guidance, that the mixed-use provision of the town's zoning bylaw is not likely to satisfy the MBTA community requirement because at a minimum, by requiring mixed use, the zoning bylaw does not allow multifamily housing as defined in the statute as of right. So that was the email that I think I shared with folks probably a week ago.
So Willow, your Willow development required a special permit?
No. That was site plan review.
Isn't that in the same zoning category? How, how did that, if mixed use isn't allowed? Well, I guess it wasn't mixed use. It was all resident, all residential.
Yeah, that's a different question. This was basically asking town council whether or not our B district, as it's now written, complies with what the state's requirements are relative to this MBTA community housing requirement. So she's saying that based on the fact that we, in our B zoning, require a mixed-use component, she's saying that we don't.
Okay, got it, I got it. That's how Willow Street got approved in the B district is because it was mixed use.
Right.
Okay.
As a, as a requirement.
Got it, got it. So we have to.
We have to allow multifamily that doesn't have a mixed use.
So.
In order to conform to the MBTA, yeah.
Actually, we could just modify the existing bylaw and just say, you know, it doesn't have to include mixed use.
Exactly. It's easy enough to wordsmith that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just remove, remove the requirement for mixed use and we're, we're good.
Okay.
She's very careful to point out, as you'll see in, in the email, that the state is clear that they haven't finished.
Yeah.
Right, right. So we probably don't want to change our zoning bylaw at this point, even if it's just a three-word, you know, change until the state is completely settled on everything.
Right, because whatever we do will be wrong.
Yeah, that's right.
And she's very cautious about telling us that until we get a fully clear picture from the state that we don't have to do anything, we're not in uncompliance, but just stay tuned.
Okay.
Life is, life is never dull on a planning board.
Well, you know, I know that the big push here is that the state considers itself to be in a housing crisis. And this was, you know, something that they have created to try to, yeah, foster growth of worker housing.
Got it.
And we're housing to be able to promote the Commonwealth's economy.
So next up is minutes, I think.
Yep. February the 16th, minutes.
And we're going to turn to Marnie Crouch, queen of minutes.
Yes, queen of minutes. I do have a fair number of comments. I, I don't know how to, should I just, you know, set forth my proposed changes and work with you, Patrick, on these?
That would be perfectly fine. Are they typographical? Or are they substance? Or are they relative to votes?
They're fine with respect to how everyone voted. It's more, I think, just a couple of mistakes. I, there was a reference to eliminating or rewriting the Affordable Housing Bylaw. I think that just got misconstrued. We were thinking about how the inclusionary bylaw should impact the new proposed flexible development bylaw. So there were just a few, few comments, but if, if everyone's okay, I can work with Patrick on this.
That's great.
Just clean up.
Yep, thank you. So we'll table that until that's, those modifications have been made. Anything else, Patrick?
Let's see, we had a parking meeting last week. I know Rick was on that. We have pretty much evaluated the downtown parking environment. The upshot is, is that there's enough parking there, but it's very inappropriately managed. Our signage is poor, our maintenance is poor. The pedestrian environment needs some investment from the town. We've got sidewalks that aren't elevated. We've got sidewalks that are asphalt at the same level as the street. Crosswalks that need some improvement. But the biggest thing is that we have more private parking available in downtown than we do have public. However, between the two, we, we have more than enough. We just need to be using it better. We do have a, a concept plan that I'll send out to all the planning board members. I need to get that posted on the town's website so people can see that. But it's basically illustrating a parking plan for, you know, what the parking timeframes would be on such-and-such street. So I think that might be helpful to people. Eventually, we want to take it to the Board of Selectmen, have them approve it. So DPW can erect new signage and the police department has the ability to then enforce timeframes. But more importantly, it gives people an understanding of, you know, how long can I park on railroad? How long can I park on Willow Street? Where should I park if I'm an MBTA computer, et cetera? So I think it, it was a, a pretty good job. We're not finished yet. But Rick, you might have some thoughts that you want to share.
Rick, I mean, Patrick, where do primarily the business owners park?
Well, primarily, they park in their own private property. The vast majority of parking in downtown is privately owned. I do know that some do park exactly where you don't want them to, which is in front of the store. You know, it's hard to get away from that. And it's just being human, I guess. But, you know, like on the, the shopping center property, that rear parking lot is virtually never used.
The one, the one that is sort of beside the railroad station?
Next to it, yeah.
Yeah.
Next to it.
Yeah.
You know, but as I found out, the ZBA decision back, I guess it was in the, the 80s, it required that parking to be back there. And that parking was all predicated on one space per 300 square feet of retail space. Which brings me to another point. The consultants are telling us that, you know, our zoning, as it is right now, which now is requiring 1.5 unit, or 1.5 spaces per unit rather than two per unit, is ahead of the curve in terms of appropriate amount of parking for residential.
Meaning people don't have as many cars per family as they used to? For residents? Meaning that residents don't have as many cars per residence as they used to?
Yeah, correct. Or as many as we used to regulate them. And I think there's often been an overreaction to the fact that, you know, we don't want to have people parking out in the street. We don't want to have to have, you know, excess parking in downtown neighborhood streets in a way that, you know, impedes. in downtown neighborhood streets in a way that, you know, impedes, uh, the business parking.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
But the, the overriding conclusion of the study is that, in fact, we have enough aggregate parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the conclusion is.
Manage it appropriately and, and we don't signage it. And because we don't effectively signage it, we can enforce it.
Right, right. It pretty much described a hodge, hodge, uh, set of, uh, rules that were contradictory. Uh, I think the parking study hadn't been done since nineteen eighty-three. So it, the lack of signage, lack of direction, lack of clarity. Um, so this is gonna give us a roadmap for trying to correct those.
Okay.
That's it for, um, for me.
Me too.
Anything else? Okay, so somebody has, um, the opportunity here to put us out of our misery.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, Marnie has made the motion. Bill has seconded to adjourn. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, then we'll put it up to a vote. All right, uh, Marnie, since you made the motion, you get to vote first.
I vote in favor.
Of?
Adjourning.
Okay, Bill, since you seconded.
Vote in favor of adjourning?
Okay, uh, Corey? You're muted.
Yeah, sorry, Corey, will you, I?
Okay, and, uh, Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Okay, and Rick Mitchell, aye to adjourning. So, thank you, everybody.
Let me.
Good night.
Aye.
Good night.
Aye.